Members of council and viewing audience will call the meeting to order. If you wouldn't mind standing, please for a moment of silent reflection and remain standing for Oh Canada. Thank you. Members of council, you've had a chance to look at items on the agenda. Is there any disclosures of conflict of interest? Seeing none, so noted. Adoption of the minutes of the closed and regular meeting of council held October 27, 2020, and the minutes of the special meeting of council held October 29, 2020 be adopted as presented. Moved by Deputy Mayor Malas, seconded by Anita Nicho Spagnolo, all in favor. That carries, thank you very much. Mayor's comments, just one important occasion tomorrow, Remembrance Day. We should remember him every day, but tomorrow is a big day of celebration. A reminder to all listening audience. We will not be having, we will be having a live presentation, but we're asking everyone to stay home and watch it on YouTube. I believe this site is on our website. And we'll be, have the honor of visiting some veterans and their families. Nine families will be visiting tomorrow. So Councilor Ekpata will be accompanying myself along with Chief Leon Toet and Fire Chief Dave Sutton. So it's an honor to be asked to go out and visit these people. So let's keep, remember what they've done for us and let's, we forget. We have no presentations, public meetings, delegations, first report. Okay, thank you. E1 regarding 6535 Malden Road, Mr. Burgess, I think is with us.
You have Mr. Salani. Your worship and members of council, the report before you is with respect to an existing commercial building that's located on Malden Road. The owners have come forward for a small addition to the one-story building and staff have reviewed this and are recommending that council approve the site plan that would allow the addition to the building and the increase in the size of the outdoor area for the daycare.
Thank you, Mr. Salani, short and sweet as usual. Any questions, members of council? Council's pleasure. Moved by Deputy Mayor Malas, seconded by Counselor Carrick, all in favor. That carries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salani. Item E2, December counting meeting schedule. Is there anything you want to add, Ms. Jean? Nothing to add? Counsel's pleasure. Counsel D'Jur, moved by Counsel D'Jurley, no questions correct, just, I just see hands going up. Counsel D'Jurley and Counsel Renault, all in favor. That carries, thank you. The DMAF grant, which we were happy to receive, 14.8 million. Mr. Mara.
Thank you. So tonight's report is a first step in starting to, to work through the grant, the successful grant that the town received. And so certainly tonight's report is regarding the study for the subject area. The area is a rather large area with respect to the overall approach. And it's along our entire waterfront from Turkey Creek right to our southern boundary. The town has initiated discussions with StanTech well before the grant announcement. And we were working on final details and a scope and a proposal based on some of the discussions we had with StanTech and knowing that we, we were intending to do something and/or bring something forward in future years, even without the grant, at least to have the study in hand to, to work ourselves through identifying what improvements need to happen within the area. But certainly the grant has given us a good opportunity to move forward with implementing some of these items. So in discussions with the consultant, we've decided to break this area up into three distinct study areas. And in the report, I have general descriptions of where the study areas are. So there's, there's basically a three-stage process. All three-stage studies will be part of the environmental assessment process. It will involve public outreach, public input and things of that nature. It, the, the intent of the study is to give us the backbone of what is required to be built. As part of the grant, we have only envisioned that the major outlets, the infrastructure at the major outlets would be reconstructed and built. The grant is not going to allow us to go down individual streets and repair individual streets. It gives us an opportunity in the future, the town, an opportunity in the future to continue to expand into individual streets and things of that nature. But certainly when you're building a house, you got to start at the foundation, the footing and foundation, work our way up from there. And that's what this is, this has given us a really good, solid foundation to continue to expand within the, the, the front road area. So certainly the, in addition to what is basically covered in the, in the grant application is all the work from Marantec Drain up through Turkey Creek. So it would cover the areas or at least the major outlets for the stage one and stage two areas as described. I, I do want to put a note in, in, in my presentation here is those areas are generally described verbally within the report. As we start to progress through the study and really delve into all of the existing infrastructure out there, those will be further refined through maps and that will be part of basically stage one to really define all three stages and communicate that out to the public. So with this, StanTech has prepared a proposal in here. In the report, you see that there is, there is fees, consulting fees for, for this work. So the, the three stages are identified within this report. So totaling about just shy of $500,000. And it's broken up between the three various stages. I mean, there's also scheduled, a schedule available for the three stages. And so certainly the priority is really being pushed on to stage one and two to get those completed. And certainly because this is an environmental assessment process and involves the public, there's a lot of mandatory timeframes that we have to meet. So certainly the, the completion of this goes into early 2022. And then at that point, some of the construction can commence on some of those major outlets. So with that, the, the recommendation before you tonight is to award this study project to StanTech Consulting. And if you have, if there's any further questions, I'm available for questions.
Council questions, Counsel Renault. Jeff, you're still muted. There you go. That's good.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Peter, the study schedule in there, we've got stage one, March 2022, stage two, June 2022, and stage three, August 2022. Am I led to believe that will be presented three separate times, three separate presentations about this? Or is this something that council will be getting back in the future?
Correct, so as the study progresses, again, this is a public consultation, so we need to address concerns of the public. So there will be three formal presentations for each stage of the study to council as we get to it. So three notice of study commencements, three notice of study completions. And it's done in this fashion so that we can ensure that, again, each resident is probably interested in their particular area that they don't have to come and look through 200 slide decks or look through a variety of information and try to locate their individual properties. It'll be more geared towards specific areas and certainly from, from dealing with the consult, the public consultation, it gives us an opportunity to be able to put a bit more attention to some of the concerns that may come forward in dealing with those in that manner. So yes, there will be three separate presentations to council as each stage is completed.
Thank you, Peter, but it's going to make some people happy that we're asking you questions.
Any other questions? Seeing none, council's pleasure.
The recommendation.
Moved by Counsel Renault, seconded by Deputy Mayor Malas, all in favor. That carries unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Peter. Item G1, that the reported deputy clerk dated October 29, 2020 regarding the extension of council committee assignments extending, ending November 30th, 2022 be received. Any questions? Moved by Deputy Mayor Malas, seconded by Counsel Ekpata, all in favor. That carries, thank you. Okay, the one we've been waiting for. Proposed 2021 budget release and highlights. We have in the background our magical finance team, Tono Ferro and Dale Langley.
Evening, Mayor Bondi, members of council. We have a brief presentation to accompany the 2021 budget release and highlights report. And I will share the screen now. So this presentation will focus on the summary of the 2021 proposed budget and the complete budget document will follow on November 24. Sorry, some difficulties there. The 2021 budget was processed, was completed in a similar fashion as in previous years. Administration, members of administration met on multiple occasions and gave consideration to numerous factors, including the current COVID-19 global pandemic. The budget was prepared similar to previous years, including last year. And administration will continue to seek funding support from upper levels of government in respect to global pandemic and its effects, such as the safe restart program. Also, should there be a need, the town has developed a strong level of reserve balances as well. We'll also take a minute to discuss the 2021 budget changes in comparison to previous years, the delay and the impact reassessment and the effects of that, a budget overview, as well as the 2021 capital budget and some future significant projects that we have committed to. So this slide illustrates the change year over year in the budget. 2021 proposed budget includes 1.713 million in, in the change from the previous year. The majority of this change comes from inflationary pressures. Those include wages and benefits as well as inflation on capital contribution. It's important that we continue our increasing capital for inflationary reasons and so that our purchasing power remains the same in the future when we are replacing assets. There are other smaller inflationary pressures such as garbage and disposal fees, as well as some bait, building and maintenance expenses. Additionally, there has been increases lower than last year, but some increases in police services and long-term capital contributions, which in the previous years we had increased by $600,000. But this year, the proposed budget includes increases of only 300,000. Lastly, there's some growth in service level increases as well in that 1.7 million. Those include increases to master plans such as the fire, fire master plan and river, riverfront master plan. These are at lower levels than previous years, but it is important that we are continuing our practice to plan ahead or build a hole to plan for future large projects as we have done in the past. This slide is meant to illustrate the year-over-year changes and the decrease in year-over-year, I guess, changes. The green represents the 2020 change that occurred in these areas, inflationary, service level changes, contributions to capital and police services. And the blue was meant to represent the 2021 change year-over-year. As you can see, there is a slight increase of inflationary costs year-over-year with respect to labor. However, all other segments are showing drastic decreases from the green to the blue with respect to the year-over-year change. For example, in 2020, we contributed an additional $600,000 to our capital plan buildup, whereas this year, we are proposing only $300,000 increase in the capital plan buildup. Likewise, there's also a smaller increase when it comes to master plans and service level operational changes as well. Budget funding sources come from numerous areas, three in particular, but one affects us more than others this year. Assessment on existing properties has increased in the Talis Al back from decreasing amount in 2013 to roughly 300,000 from 2014 to 2016. In 2017, with the reassessment, this grew sharply to almost 1 million. In 2020, this reached 1.3 million. However, due to the postponement of the reassessment cycle by the province as a result of COVID-19, this figure is now zero for 2021. So certainly a drop from 1.3 million last year to zero in 2021. However, there are other forces of funding for the budget, as I mentioned previously, and we can see those on the next slide. This slide illustrates funding sources over the last 10 or 11 years or so. We have funding in gray from new construction. We have funding in blue from assessment on existing properties and tax rate funding is in orange. This year, we are predicting about $850,000 in new construction funding source. This is very similar to last year and slightly below 2019 amounts. However, as a reminder, there is no blue in 2021. So therefore, that's the assessment on existing properties, down from 1.3 million, again, down to zero this year. As a result, the orange represents funding increase from a tax rate increase. As you can, as you may recall, I'm sure you recall, the last two years, there has been no orange on this graph. There has been no tax rate increase. However, with the absence of the blue or assessment on existing properties increase, we are at this point recommending a proposed 1.95% tax rate increase, which is what is funding this orange column on the, on the graph here. So again, it's a 1.95% tax rate, municipal tax rate that we are proposing. So what is that, what is the effect of that on our residential taxpayer? This slide illustrates that. A 1.95% tax rate increase, municipal tax rate change, sorry, equates to $984.74 per $100,000 assessment. This is less than $19 more than the previous year. When factoring an estimate for the county rate and the education rate, the overall tax rate change would be less than one and a half percent, be at 1.48%. The overall change would be less than $24 on $100,000 of assessment. So again, 1.95%, municipal tax rate change. With these estimates for the county and the education rates, that estimates to less than one and a half percent overall change. Included in this report is an appendix C is the 2021 proposed capital budget. There are a number of, this particular graph shows our capital budget proposal based on department. Obviously, the largest one here is $10 million for 21 Recreation and Culture Small Coast Waterfront Project. Also, pumping stations are shown on here at $3 million, that's part of the DMAF grant. $2 million attributed to roads and fleet facilities at one and a half million. So this graph is intended to show where amongst the departments the capital budget has been split. The capital budget in total equates to 2.5 million. It includes previously approved capital items, annual capital spending allocations, such as the annual mill and pave, items related to replacement or repair such as fleet replacements. Furthermore, the 2021 capital budget includes some capital enhancement type projects, such as the seven-tap hallway display and additional picnic tables. Additionally, there are two significant enhancement type projects. The Small Coast Waterfront Phase Two and the Pumping Station Enhancements, they're multi-year projects. And I bring that up because this year, the 2021 capital budget format has changed slightly and we are showing things in separate categories based on these examples I just gave. Annual capital spending allocations being one of them and enhancements being another, there are five in total. Summarize. This capital chart here is meant to show that the town has proposed, or administration has proposed 22.5 million dollars in capital spending this year. However, we have also committed to an additional $34 million over the next six years. With the DMAF grant, 60%, which will be funded by the Talis Al and 40% from the grant. Year two of phase one for the Small Coast Waterfront is an additional $8 million on top of the $10 million proposed for 2021. So $18 million over the next two years. The last column here is meant to represent grant-dependent projects. These projects include the Small Coast Waterfront Phase Three, Oliver Farms Phase One and Malden Road Phase One. Administration will continue to monitor grant opportunities for these large-scale projects that are labeled grant-dependent at this time. That concludes, I guess, the pre-presentation. And to summarize, the municipal budget tax rate increase is proposed at 1.95%. And the 2021 capital budget is proposed at 22 and a half million dollars. I will, I guess, wait any questions on the budget? Or actually, our treasurer would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Tono. Just a, thanks for the great presentation. Just a couple items that I'd like to reiterate and, and stress, just a couple of the large factors. This year with the, with, going into 2021 with the property tax values staying the same as the previous year, that's putting, that obviously is putting some stress on, on the tax rate. But I just want to talk about the importance of growth. So we, about $850,000 of our fundings coming from growth from new construction around the town. Without that growth, our tax rate, instead of being a proposed 1.95% tax rate increase, it would actually be 4.2%. So just wanted to stress the importance of growth. We have healthy growth around the town right now and that's, that's important, that we continue to focus on, on growth. Also, comparing to 2020, the average tax bill, factoring in the increase of assessment values on homes, the average tax bill increased by 3.75% when you factor that in. This year, the average tax bill will be the same for everyone, which is a 1.95% increase. So I also wanted to thank all the departments, you know, we, we came in right at the beginning and said, you know, with COVID and, and all these different challenges that we're facing this year, we're really going to have to limit the budget increases and the proposed service level increases. And, and you know, this budget really is bare bones. As you can see, when Tono put up the slide comparing the increases to last year, we've really cut back on a lot of them. Even, you know, we've been putting away the $600,000 every year to build up our capital. We've, for this one year, we've cut it down in half. We've also cut down, we, last year, we were, we put $400,000 away for the waterfront project or the master plan buildup, we've decreased that to 210,000. We've been really, this is a really bare bones budget going into this. So thanks, everyone, for, for that. Again, the importance of the capital buildup over the past four years, four years ago, there's a presentation that council that stressed the importance of the annual contribution that's $600,000 a year that we dedicated. That has really helped us out this year. You know, that DMFA, DMAF grant that we've received, that our portion of the funding, we had to pay $22 million. We're going to issue some debt for that. There's going to be no impact on the tax rate because we've already built that into our budget over the past four years. We've significantly increased our contribution to capital reserves and we're going to be able to use some of that buildup to fund our portion of the debt. So that's just, again, stresses the importance of continuing to build up for infrastructure replacement. And that's, that's all that I have to add right now. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Dale and Mr. Tono. Tono, can you take your shared screen off? It just makes it easier for me to see the, everybody on the screen. Thank you. Mr. Carrick, I think you're first.
Thank you, your worship, for you to turn over. Anyways, first of all, you guys always do a great job. Everybody that, our administration does a great job, so we'll get that all the way now. My question is, looking at this year, and I know it's maybe a little more difficult to look for next year's budget, but roughly as we tie in this year, I understand the impact and how that might change or might not change depending on the COVID and what's going on with our situation. But having said that, what are we looking at roughly? Like a two-year plan this year and next year? And I worry, so we're worried about this year because we can deal with this. But next year, moving forward, just so we can get set it up, get an idea from you guys what, what we're looking at possibly.
I could take that question. So we are looking ahead, we don't have everything finalized yet for net, for 2022 budget, but we are factoring in the different challenges. We kind of have to wait and see. At this point in time, we have not heard from Impact. And if they're going to go in and reassess the values again and factored in over three years or, or four years, we're not sure. As soon as we find out, we're going to communicate that with council and have a communication plan with our residents just to, so that everyone can understand the impact on that. But we have, in a forecasted plan, planned for this year and next year for a tighter budget. Just for example, the master plan buildup that we presented to council a couple meetings ago, rather than the 400,000 annual buildup for this year or for 2021 and 2022, we've factored, we've cut that in half for those two years. So we are, we are looking to be, just because of the times we're in right now with COVID and whatnot, we are looking at a very responsible budget for the next two years and trying to limit the increases, except for items that we've obviously committed to, such as the fire master plan and some of the waterfront, like we've committed to phasing that, that in. And now with the DMFA, DMFAF project, but we've already factored that into the budget, so there's no impact there.
Okay, thanks, that, without giving me numbers or whatever, but understanding that we're, we should be hopefully fairly safe.
Mr. Militia would like to add something.
Thank you for the question, Counsel Carrick. I, I think one of the things that we need to bear in mind is that the COVID pandemic still is ongoing and how that affects 2021. I think we all hope that it ends with the new year, but the reality is, is that there, we are going to have some COVID impact into 2021. And so the 2022 budget will be challenging, just as challenging as we've had the current budget, whether it's how Impact is assessing and the changing shift in terms of increases on what we would term as low to mid-value properties versus the value, the increases on assessment on high-value properties, as well as how we deal with COVID through 2021, will have an impact. Again, we, we're very conscious of the situation that we're in and the fact that, again, the, the number of the initiatives that both Mr. Langley and Mr. Ferro spoke about, we are scaling back the 2021 budget. Again, normally we wouldn't see, again, we're very staunch on, on our approach with respect to contributing to reserves, contributing to our capital plan, contributing to a, a number of those projects in terms of the master planning projects that we have. And, and we hold those near and dear because we know that it is sacrificed today, but it pays dividends in the future as, as we're witnessing today with the ability to fund the disaster mitigation and adaptation grant through existing sources as opposed to having to raise taxes to do that. So again, we firmly believe in that process. And, and when we look at the budget, we always look, we, we view it as a multi-year focus. We don't look at individual years and, and perspective. We don't look at individual years and, and perspective. Uh, we are though conscious that this year and the next are going to be difficult for some of the residents. We're very fortunate, uh, in that many of our residents are, are faring well. Uh, incredibly, our growth numbers are almost as strong as they have been in the past two or three years despite having COVID. And, and remember, although things are relatively better, uh, now, but if we turn back the clock in, into the April and May time period, uh, there was a, a very, uh, significant decrease in construction activity during that time. And so it's a testament to, to our community that, uh, the attractiveness of our community that folks are still wanting to move here and, and, and looking in that, in that direction. So we, again, we are, uh, adjusting the budget as, as we go forward. Uh, but we do see that, uh, again, the 2022 budget will be just as challenging as the 2021 budget as we, as we try to get back to normal. Uh, so again, that is a bit of a longer winded answer, but we are looking at that. I, I would say that, uh, expectation wise, uh, again, we always try to look at what an inflationary rate looks like uh, against our budget as, as kind of the target point. Uh, I believe that the current budget for the proposed budget for 2021 is below the inflationary increase at this point. Uh, so we're always looking for that as a target range to, to try to see where we're at. Uh, but also considering where we are with some of these one-off, uh, situations that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Counter de Jollet and then Council Renault.
Thank you. Uh, sorry about that. Um, through you, uh, I'm not sure if this would be Joe. Can you remind me please, when we have QB contracts coming up, is it next year that we've got some?
Uh, our, our collective agreements expire at the end of this current year, so we will.
This year.
Yeah, we will be entering negotiations with our major, um, associations and, and union groups uh, towards the end of this year and into, uh, the early part of 2021.
Okay, hopefully everybody's going to be reasonable, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council Renault.
Thank you, your worship. Um, first of all, um, to our finance people and to everybody that's put this together so far. Um, I think we all can appreciate that, that goal of, of keeping it towards inflation. Um, as there's been a lot of press lately with some of our neighboring municipalities and their projected rates. So, uh, what you presented tonight is already very appreciated and I look forward to the full budget document. Um, my question is in regards to the typical $600,000, uh, $600,000 buildup, which, um, I was part of the last council and we, uh, voted to approve. And I'm wondering if, uh, that cut down this year, um, is that so that we can keep it closer to inflation? Is it because we did so well with that new grant? What would you, what would you, what reason would you give that we've cut that in half?
Well, we, we've cut it in half to be closer to inflation. Um, that is a number that we're going to continually need to increase. Even if we become fully funded, every year we're going to need to increase because every year new roads are built, new storm sewers are built. And those eventually need to be replaced. So right now we're playing catch up. We've done a great job the last four years. We've built it up by over $2 million, which is great. Um, during budgets, we'll have a, a slide that's going to show our progress. We're, we're working on a five-year capital plan just to kind of show where we were, how far we've come and where we need to go in the future. But we have done a very good job, uh, at building that up. Um, and it's allowing us to do, you know, that DMA, DMAF grant. If we received that grant and we hadn't built up our reserves, we'd still be able to fund it, but we'd have to pull from somewhere else. Because we've built that up, we, we're being able to fund that. And we're also going to be able to contribute our annual contribution to other areas such as roads and even other areas of storm sewer improvements and our fleet and facilities and whatnot. But, but as prices go up around here, they're going up higher than the rate of inflation. We're going to need to continue to build that up, but we're just taking a little bit of a break this year, just, uh, just because of the situation we're in.
Thank you. Um, again, very well appreciated. I'm sure, uh, it will be very well appreciated throughout the community. Thank you.
So who's going to take credit for that, Dale, you or Tunnel?
I'll let Tunnel take the credit for that.
Any other council questions? Oh, one comment from Mercio.
Uh, again, thanks to, uh, to Tunnel and, and Dale for, uh, certainly the preparation thus far. We look forward to the budget sessions which are slated, uh, for the 16th and 17th of December. Uh, and the budget, the entire budget document will be available on our website as well. Uh, will be released, uh, just shortly in, in the next week or so. Uh, so we do look forward to that and, and again, as we get comments back, we will, uh, uh, we will start to, uh, feed those through our, our process and feed them through the, the budget, uh, the budget deliberation sessions. Again, and if, if member, unfortunately, again, through Zoom, sometimes we lose some of that personal contact. But if members of council do have questions with respect to the, the, the budget ahead of time, please feel free to reach out to, to, uh, Mr. Langley or Mr. Ferrero, and they will, uh, they'll address your concerns as we go forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel's pleasure. Moved by Counselor De Jollet, seconded by Deputy Mayor Malash, all in favor. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item G3 advocacy update letter to the government on Bill 218. Deputy Mayor Malash.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive, seconded by Counsel Renault. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Summary of reports to council. Moved by Deputy Mayor Malash, seconded by Counsel Carrick, all in favor. That carries. Thank you. On the bylaws, we have five bylaws on all three readings. Moved by Counsel Adichos Pagnolo and Counsel Akpada, all in favor. That carries. Thank you. Council questions. Counsel Carrick.
Through you to administration, and I'm not sure, uh, what the exact policy is, but when it comes to sidewalks, we have streets that have no sidewalks, like Stewart's an example, and there's many others, I'm sure. Or we're doing sidewalks on two sides of the streets as opposed to making sure that at least one street has one side of a sidewalk. So is that something we should be looking at before we force two sidewalks on a street? We make sure that at least every street has one sidewalk before we start moving forward with that. If that's even possible, I'm not sure exactly how that works, but to me it makes sense that at least we, we start looking at making sure every street has a sidewalk as opposed to no sidewalk. Who could ever answer that?
Mr. Militia, oh, Mr. Salani?
Your, your worship and members of council, uh, I, I think it's important to make a distinction that the areas where two sidewalks are going, the developers are paying for that. So that's the new greenfield areas. The town is not, uh, responsible for any of those costs. Those are all 100% paid for from growth, uh, with respect to going into existing neighborhoods. Uh, those areas in La Salle that don't currently have sidewalks. Uh, uh, there is a report that's coming forward from, uh, administration, uh, that's going to deal with all forms of active transportation and identify gaps and a policy going forward in terms of dealing with pedestrian safety and cyclist safety in those areas. So those are the ones that are funded through the tax base and part of the budgets. Whereas again, the, uh, the greenfield areas are the, are the areas that are not funded by the taxpayers.
So if I yes, so as we, just, let's take Stewart's for an example earlier, or even Morton, we had that lady come before us. Now would that be just incorporating a sidewalk? I know we're looking at the grand scheme of things, but the easiest fix might be a sidewalk, even though you have drainage, you have all that other stuff you have to worry about. I suppose the bike lanes or something like that. Parking, not parking, does that make sense?
Yeah, again, that is something that administration, uh, will be, uh, there's going to be a comprehensive report. That's going to identify here is short-term priority recommendations. And here's medium to long-term dealing with, uh, sidewalks and, and cycling facilities.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Statements by council members. Counselor Akpada and Counsel Renault.
I just want to, uh, your worship, just, uh, let the citizens know here that, uh, we've worked on making our Remembrance Day ceremony as safe as possible. As a veteran myself, I love the parade. I love to attend and I love to be close quarter with my colleagues. But the world is a little different. Uh, I was at a legion and I saw a sign that said, 20, you think 2020 was bad? What about 1914, 1915, 1916? So to all of our friends in the community, we ask them to be aware of the COVID circumstance we find ourselves in. To, and I hate to put it this way, for their own safety, please watch us online. Participate if you're at home, but the safety of those who are attending must be paramount. We must be cognizant of the fact that some of those who are laying wreaths or who are participating in the actual ceremony to meet underneath the numbers as set by the province, so we don't put ourselves in a liability position are all the folks you're going to see. It does not mean that you don't care. It does not mean that you have not remembered. It does not mean that the day is not important. It is simply a respectful blip on our hundred-year radar that we too shall get through this. And I want to thank administration and the staff that have come up with a virtual Remembrance Day plan to ensure that all members of our community can participate safely with the proper distance and that we can pay the proper respect. From my perspective, I, I would not know how to live with myself if someone who survived Korea or someone who survived the Second World War unfortunately contracted COVID by coming to pay respects to their colleagues on that day. We have a responsibility. We will meet our responsibility. It shall look different, but it does not mean that we are not being respectful for those who have gone before us. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Akpada. Well said. Counsel Renault.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'm just going to take a second here, uh, to open an email that was sent earlier.
Jeff, you're muted. Still muted, Jeff.
Okay. Back. Um, you know, what I wanted to do was read a letter, um, that was forwarded by the clerk today. Um, about a month ago, uh, we were all invited to check out the new fire, uh, our new fire truck. And, uh, I know a lot of us got a chance to go down and see it. And, um, I had the opportunity to speak with the chief that day and, and he shared a little bit of information uh, with me that he asked me to keep quiet until it was, uh, it was, uh, confirmed. And, uh, I'm really, as many people know, I'm not really good at keeping things quiet, but I kept this one quiet. And, um, again, more for the people that are watching, uh, just to let you know, uh, our old retired fire truck has now been donated to St. Clair College in their fire program, uh, where a lot of our, our fire, uh, personnel, uh, work and, and, um, help mentor. And, um, this was a huge thing for the college. And it's something that I think, um, our entire town should be proud of. Um, that we're able to build our future and, and invest in our future by taking something that may seem like a castaway now for us is something invaluable and, and very valuable to them. So, um, thank you to all the parties that made this happen. Uh, the chief and the deputy chief and, uh, the folks down at St. Clair College. I just think it's a great thing and something our community should be proud of.
Thank you, Jeff. We are proud and it was a nice letter from John Fairley today. So I'm assuming all council members receive that copy of the letter. Any other statements by council members? Reports from committees? Informatory bylaw, first reading. Deputy Mayor Malash and Counsel Renault, all in favor. That carries second reading. Uh, Counsel Adichos Pagnolo and Counselor De Jollet, all in favor. That carries third and final reading, Counsel Akpada and Counsel Carrick. All in favor. That carries. You have your schedule of meetings. We'll see you all tomorrow at the ceremonies. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you, viewing audience. Stay home or stay home, stay well and stay safe. Good night.